Quick moment of silence for a lot of the things that we've been faced as a nation. Las Vegas, Puerto Rico. So if we could just take a minute and do that. Thank you very much. And then I would like to read a brief statement. Last week, a high school student reported receiving an anonymous written note containing a racially-charged remark. In light of this, I would like to again emphasize that our district is committed to the ideals of inclusion, human dignity, and respect for others. We model this every day as we try to live our core values of equity, wellness, and engagement so that every member of our community feels safe and supported. The high school leadership team has taken this incident and engaged students in identifying what they can do today, tomorrow, and this year to ensure everyone in the school is safe, cared for, and respected. Thank you. All right, so we have some warrants tonight. 18-007 PR dated September 28, 17, in the amount of $950,892.76. 18-007 dated 10 October 5, 17, in the amount of $2,209,111.33. The student activities 18-007 JH dated October 5, 2017, in the amount of $15,778.11. The payroll gross P-1807 dated September 28, 2017, in the amount of $2,440,300, for a total of $5,616,82.20. We also have meetings to approve in our packets. These are the meeting minutes from September 19. Are there any comments?
Yeah, I think I saw a typo in there. Section 7.2. Oh, yeah. Beth, you with me there?
Yeah.
Section 7.2, it's, where is it? Wow, that's one long sentence. Third line down, near the end, video. Video L. We need to, just get rid of the L in "video." You see that?
Oh, yeah. There was also a correction on 7.1, the amount in the second sentence should be 1.2. You don't even have 1.2 in there?
Uh huh.
Yeah, and I think, and you weren't there, right? You were absent? Yeah, so you've got to change that because Deanne was absent.
So I had to, are this for me? Yeah, the last meeting.
It was my first one back, and I had framed in my mind.
So was I while you were there. Beth was also gone for that meeting, so. All right, are there any other comments or corrections?
Yeah, yeah, one more. It says Mary Brolin, 7:15 a.m. Is that supposed to be p.m.?
No worries. Okay, I'm looking for a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, this is the point in our meeting. When we open it up to public comments on anything not related, not already listed on our agenda, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Okay, we'll just move forward then. Okay, item seven on the agenda. Let me just make sure I'm caught up. Okay, great. This is going really fast. Good job. All right, so it is October, and it's time to start the search process for the permanent superintendent. I would like to propose that we hire a search firm and that I wanted to ask Bill to send a letter to the three major search firms in the area, just requesting a one-letter, I'm trying to think of the right word, because we're not asking for a bid, we're asking for... Yeah, a proposal, just a brief proposal. And then at our next meeting, we'll bring those to the meeting, and we can take a look at it and decide at that time which one of the three that we would, I guess, assuming that they all, anyway, assuming that we would like to invite one in, then we can decide at that time which of the firms we'd like to invite in to actually present to us. And then after that, we would vote on and actually start the process with the search firm. So what I did was I asked Bill to please prepare a kind of a draft timeline, just to give everybody an idea of what would be happening and kind of, well, I'll just let Bill take it because I'm rambling.
Good evening all. So Amy has set the stage for this, what I hope will be a fairly brief presentation. I've prepared a few slides to give you a really high-level overview of what a search process may entail. I do have a possible timeline, and also included are just a couple of comments about the search process itself, that there are really two options. I do agree with Amy's proposal that the committee hire a search consultant, but just want to make a few comments about that. I do want to take a few minutes to just talk about the procurement process because there are specific requirements that we have to follow in procuring the services of a search consultant. So basically, I see the district having two options. The first is that the district can conduct the search on its own without a search consultant. What that means typically, and there are some committees that elect to do that, doesn't happen often, that means that the school committee and certain district staff take on the responsibility and the tasks and details that are associated with that. This is, I think, pretty obviously becomes labor and time-intensive, both for the district staff that are involved and for school committee members that are involved. The time commitment is very intensive, and the question I would have, and I think that you would probably all agree, the question is, does the district really have the capacity to do that? Do we have the capacity on behalf of the staff in terms of the time and the labor required? Those who would be involved under these conditions already have other daily responsibilities, so that's a real issue. The other option is that the district, as Amy had proposed, hire a consultant. And the advantages in hiring a consultant, of course, are that they're professional, they're experienced, this is what they do all the time. A consultant will actively engage in the recruitment process, which would be difficult if a district did that on its own. The consultant would lead focus groups to collect information from all of the stakeholders in the community. They actually would manage and oversee the process. And what this allows school committee members to do, in my opinion, is really to focus on the human resource aspect of a search. Your role would be to focus on the talent that comes before you during this process and then follow up doing your due diligence. So you're focusing on the talent as part of this process rather than getting bogged down in all of the details. The consultant option provides typically all of the services that are identified on this screen. I'm not going to read through all of them. I think most of you sitting around this table have either been through this process before or certainly are aware that these are the kind of tasks that the consultant would take on. And one of the things that typically happens in the consultant model is that there's a committee, and in many cases it's called the screening committee, in some districts it's called the superintendent search committee, but from the very beginning of the process, the school committee determines the school committee representatives who would serve on that. I'll use the term screening committee. They become the school committee liaisons working through the front part of the process with the consultant. So the consultant's first contact is typically through the school committee liaisons, and that gets reported back to the whole school committee. And usually there's an administrative liaison as part of that process as well. And that is something that if the committee desired, as the interim superintendent, I would be happy to take on that role. In terms of procurement, for these types of services, consulting services, that have an expected or anticipated cost of between $10,000 and $50,000, the procurement process requires that the committee solicit three written proposals. Now, the school committee can determine who to send requests for proposals to. They're not required, and you're not required to do public advertising, to put a request for proposal in the central register. And in Massachusetts, as Amy indicated, there's basically three organizations who, over the last 25 years, have been involved in, I would say, 90% of the superintendent searches in this state that have gone on over that period of time. They are the New England School Development Council, known as NESDEC, the Mass Association of School Committees with the acronym MASC, and an organization called Future Management Systems. They have done many searches, although I will tell you, over the last five years, they have done fewer and fewer searches, and that has been a decision that they have made. Just recently, in the last, I would say, three years, an outside-of-New England firm, Hazard Young and Atia Associates, known as HYA, have conducted a handful of searches in Massachusetts over the last three years. They've been involved in the Weston, the Lexington, and last year they were involved in the Framingham and Franklin searches. They did do Concord Carlisle, yes. I would estimate that the anticipated cost range for the AB search is somewhere in the $12,000 to $20,000 range. I believe the last time that AB went through this process, the cost was somewhere around $19,500. This is a qualifications and needs-based process, so when proposals are solicited, there is no requirement to take the lowest bid. What the committee will determine is the proposal that best needs the district needs and the committee's judgment regarding qualifications. And, you know, that could be, how many recent searches have they done, the human resources that the organization, the firm, will put and provide during this process. It will depend, in my opinion, on the scope of services that they identify through their proposal. So I think that gives the committee a lot of flexibility in going through that process and determining the firm that will best meet the needs for this time, you know, at this point in time for Acton-Barksboro. So, a possible timeline. And again, what the consultant, the consultant who you bring on, will develop a timeline. You'll notice that there are two slides, dates that are noted in red. Those are dates of school committee meetings that are already on the calendar. And if, what you will see, I hope, notice in going through this timeline, is that the timing, I think, is advantageous for the committee compared to some of the other initiatives, the major initiatives that the committee is involved in this year. The, one of the biggest initiatives, the funding for the feasibility study, there's a lot of work being done between now and December 4, both on the school committee side in terms of just information and the various community forum meetings that are being scheduled. Once December 4 passes, there will be a lull in that process, of the building process, for a couple of months because of the MSBA calendar. We'll go to the MSBA Board of Directors on February 14 for them to vote on the final feasibility study agreement. So there's not a lot we can do until they do that. So you'll see that in here. And then I think it also dovetails pretty nicely with the budgeting process. So you see this timeline based on, I think, what Amy proposed at the outset. Depending on what you decide at the next meeting, you could have one consultant, two consultants, three consultants come in, present their proposal to the school committee, or you could, as Amy indicated, at either the next meeting or the November 9 meeting, after a complete review of the proposals and further discussion, identify a consultant that you'd like to enter into an agreement with. And you would vote, that would be a school committee action item. So November 9th and 16th actually could happen, you know, those two, those two action items could happen at the same meeting as well. At some point, perhaps November 30th, the consultant that's been hired would meet with the school committee and provide an overview of the process. So they'd talk about the timeline. You begin the process for selecting screening committee members, defining what the criteria of that screening committee members would be. How many members, who would be represented, et cetera. On December 14, under this timeline, you would be presented by the consultant with a proposed advertising scheme and a copy of the vacancy announcement, which would be distributed by the consultant. And typically, the school committee approves those documents before they are sent out. Between December 15th and January 19th is a period of time where the consultant would conduct focus groups. And as you see in the screen, this is an example of different stakeholder groups that would be, where forums would be scheduled for. This isn't the algo limit. There could be various forums scheduled for, at different times for these groups. Some could be combined. The consultant will advise us on that. December 18th, the ad and announcement for the vacancy would be released. Sometime around January 11th, the next scheduled school committee meeting, the screening committee would be approved. And leading up to that, starting December 14, there would be, the committee would again decide what that application process would look like. January 19th would be a proposed application deadline for candidates. Shortly after that, the consultant would meet with the screening committee and conduct a workshop. The workshop could, would consist of a small review session on appropriate interviewing techniques, talk about the process around confidentiality, and start talking and providing the screening committee with application packet materials. For the next couple of weeks, 16 days or so, the screening committee would be scheduling dates to bring candidates in to be interviewed. Those would be confidential interviews at that stage in the process. Once the screening committee completed their work, they would work as a group to identify a slate of finalist candidates to be presented to the full school committee, and that could happen under this timeline at the school committee currently scheduled for February 15. That's a Thursday right before the February vacation. That gives the consultant some time to work with us here to be in touch with the finalists and to start scheduling, start the vetting process and start scheduling interviews that the school committee would conduct with the finalists. This timeline suggests that that would happen shortly after the February vacation ends up through March 5. The next school committee is March 15. That gives the committee about a week and a half, perhaps longer, depending on what that February 26 to March 5 schedule looks like, to do further vetting and then come together on the 15th to make a determination and vote to appoint a superintendent. So again, that's a possible timeline. The search consultant will definitely advise the committee, A, as to whether something like this is doable, and probably, I'm sure, make some tweaks. This timeline suggests from start to finish, 120 days. And I did some research of the three firms, NESDEC, MASC, and Future Management, and that seems to follow right within the timeline that they typically use in other searches.
So I'm going to open it up to comments, questions, Paul?
So, just getting back to the first option, after having gone through the interim search, I have total confidence...
Can you talk in your mic a little bit more?
I thought I was.
I know, I'm sorry. It's like, it's, yeah, perfect.
It's going to get germy.
I know, it's okay.
So, yeah, I know. Having gone through the interim search, relying on the staff and administration, I have total confidence that they could do this and do it well. But that was during the summer, and I only, my only concern would be if it would distract them from serving the students of the district, and I have no interest in going that route. So, you know, we've also, I've also been on the search where we've hired a consultant, and, you know, I'm on board with that as well. I'll rely on Bill's experience with which firms we should, you know, reach out to. But, yeah, so either way, well, I think this timeline seems reasonable. If we're done by March 15, that sounds like there's plenty of time to make, you know, to bring someone on board. I think we're talking about July 1? Yeah, so the question I do have, is this kind of the proper time, I guess? I didn't realize this, but there seems to be a proper time to be doing these searches?
I think there are different perspectives on that. When, I think there are some committees that are in a position and are able to start a search early in the year, so they go through this process late summer, very first part of the school year. And then there are many searches that go into January, February, you know, where they're right in the meat of the search. One thing I've noticed this year is that, and it's the first time in many, many years, but at this time last year, there were approximately, I, for many years, I've watched this process and have kept a record of how many public searches are going on each year. Last year at this time, there were over 12 searches that had already been advertised. Right now, I'm aware of four. So for whatever reason, it seems that this may not be as active a year as previous years. So I think this process, this timeline, I think will be, will be okay. And just for clarification, I did not give Paul a hard time during the interim search process.
So, thank you so much for that overview. It was really helpful to have the big picture of what happens in the process. I just wasn't aware that this was going to happen in this way since this was listed as an oral presentation, so I did a little work online. And Hazard Young and Atia, that HYA firm, has been involved in some searches with communities that are on our comparative communities list. So I would urge you, I would support sending out a request for proposal to HYA in addition to the other three. That's one thing. And then I had a question. So I just, I have Concord Carlisle's timeline, and so they posted their vacancy September 2, 2016, through January 1, which is like four months. And then they hire, in that time period, they then hired their search firm, which was HYA, and they, the search firm did the focus groups and the public forums and the online surveys, and they together pooled all that information and created a leadership profile out of that. So I was wondering if that's, if it matters, if the vacancy's out there for months and months, or if a month, which is roughly what you've suggested, is sufficient time?
Yeah, in my opinion, having a vacancy open for four months, you know, I've never seen that before. HYA's process is a little different than the other organizations. And they, most of the, well, I know that MASC and NESDEC will provide a menu of services for the search that committees can pick and choose from. I think the NESDEC comprehensive search is the best option. But HYA, as I understand it, the process is a little different, and what they prefer to do is they do, they do all of the initial review of the application materials themselves and do not share that with, in our case, the screening committee. They identify a slate of semifinalist candidates, if you will, that they present to the screening committee for interviewing. And, you know, it's different. It's a different process. I think that their timeline, their application timeline, is reflective of that because they are out there recruiting, they are out there talking with candidates that they have in their database, if you will. My concern with an application... My, my concern with an application period being open that long is that someone may be very interested on September 2nd and start the process with them and be done by the end of September, and they're waiting three months for the final feedback on where their application is going. In the meantime, you have other searches going on that a potential candidate is interested in, and my sense is that, you know, they may lose candidates as a result of that. But I'm not as familiar with H-Y-A as I am with the other organizations, but, but I do agree it's worth soliciting a proposal from them. And in going out and, and asking firms to provide a proposal, I think specifically what we would ask them to provide us is a proposal that includes the scope of services that they would provide, or certainly a menu. They would describe us, they would provide us with the description of the process that they intend to use, so it would be more details related to certain aspects or pieces of the scope of services. And then, of course, we would ask them to include what their fee structure for the search would be. So, I think, not knowing that much about H-Y-A, it certainly wouldn't, it certainly would be useful to at least understand, you know, what their, what their scope would consist of and what their process consists of.
And the RFP, it's a pretty standard document, not requiring any-
Yeah, so, so, in this case, you know, it's really what we'd be sending out is a request for services. It, it, you know, it can be oral, it can be a one paragraph, "We're doing a superintendent search, we're looking for a comprehensive search, could you please provide us with a proposal that includes scope of services, description of the process, and the fee involved?" Really straightforward.
I did just want to say that the reason that I said three and not four was because of my, and I agree with you, we should, we should go ahead and send one out to H-Y-A. My initial reaction was that we, as a committee, really didn't want to rely on the search committee to come to us and say, "Here are the ones that you, here are the semifinalists that you can now interview." I felt like the, as a committee and the screening committee, we wanted to have a little bit more control over the process, but, so that was initially why I said three rather than four. But I agree, let's, let's see if that's their only option and how they do that. Mary?
So, a, a comment on the timing, it does feel a little late to me, only because, so we did two major searches where I work at Brandeis in the last year, and we lost good candidates who were in our finalist pool, and they took other jobs waiting to hear from us. So, that four months, like, we, you have to be really careful, you can lose really good people. And I'm afraid even March, whatever date it was in March, feels a little late if they are applying for other positions and get an offer. So, I just want, you know, we'll see, I'm wondering, could we even bring their proposals to our next meeting, or is that too quick?
No, I think that's doable, because this is something, if, if this is the direction the committee decides to go in, the request could be sent out, we can contact these firms That would give us, you know, 10 days in order to get the information for a packet, and I, I think they would say that's quite doable. We're not asking, you know, we, we, and, and all of these firms, of course, have, they have templates that they just provide.
So, I am in support of using a search firm and would encourage us to do it on a shorter timeframe.
Yeah, and if, and if we, if we move that up to the next meeting, then we can start the process sooner than what the proposed timeline suggests.
The same with Mary, I'm concerned about the timeline. I don't know when our last search was. I know we tried to beat the others into providing that offer. The December 15th to January 19th dates that you have here for the focus groups, December 15th to December 30th, you are not going to get any parents going to focus groups. I mean, that's, that's the heat of, it's a week before Christmas vacation, and then you're in Christmas vacation. So, I, I don't even see those two weeks as an opportunity for focus groups.
So, that time, I envisioned that time between December 15th and January 3rd, when we come back from the, from the break. That would be a time when, when dates for the, for the forums, for the focus groups would be set, all the logistical details in determining where these meetings will take place, what time, you know, who will lead them from the search firm, all of that. And, and I didn't anticipate under this timeline that any focus groups would happen before that, but the logistical details, that would be an opportunity to, to get that done. I, I do agree, I, the timeline is tight, and, and I think that's why, again, this, this was my take based on the timeline that these, these firms generally use. We would want to rely on the consultant that we hire to provide advice on how we can make that timeline a more productive one. The only concern I had was that, I think given an October 19th decision on a consulting group, we could start focus groups, you know, in, in a short period of time, but I am sensitive to the fact that we're also asking community members in particular to attend our forums on the building project as well. So, we just, I, my concern is that we be strategic, you know, about the scheduling process for those different groups. And, and maybe there isn't a need to be, obviously, we wouldn't schedule them for the same evenings, but we don't want to be in a position where people feel they're being overloaded with meeting requests.
Marley?
I have one follow-up question after Diane mentioned, and I think Mary mentioned that too. For four time, four months of the, the job opening time, so what is the right time period for open that position? So, what, I know, if we can't get that candidate that, that position is now filled, we probably continue to make the job opening there, but what could be the right time, like two months, two and a half?
You know, I think that one of the challenges with this timeline is that the application period coincides with a, a vacation period. So, it, it could restrict potential candidates. They would, they would have to, they become aware of the, the opening before the Christmas break. Candidates who are seriously considering the possibility of applying certainly would be thinking about that. They may not actually fill out the required paperwork during the vacation period, but once people returned after the break, you know, they, they would still have two and a half weeks under that timeline. Again, if we start the process earlier, I think, I think the recruiting process, the advertisement could also go out earlier, so that gives people a little more time. But again, I think that's something that, you know, that's, that's advice that the consultant would certainly provide us and make recommendations to the committee on.
Yeah, you know, my suggestion, maybe we can, you know, make that timeline 10 days earlier, or something like that. Okay, this is one, one concern. I have, I have to echo what Paul said at the beginning. I, I love them, I loved the whole process for the interim search, for the whole entire group. I, I think we all did the very great job. So, what's the difference between the whole entire search group, which is consists of our parents, or, you know, the representative from the admin team, from the parents, from us, and from, I mean, and the consultant firm?
So, we still, we would still have a screening committee that would consist of various stakeholders from the community. So, this is not, this would, we would still have that process where we have community members and teachers, administrators, school committee members on a, on a screening committee to go over the applications and then ultimately to do the, the initial interviews and those kinds of things.
Yep. You have to remember that this is probably a bigger administrative process, because more people will apply for a permanent position, I would think, than an interim. So, it, so part of what this organization would do is help with all the scheduling and, you know, all of that planning. In, in this process, you go on-site visits at the end, visit them at their schools in addition to having them come here, the finalists. So, it's more of an administrative process. So, the organization would help us through that process and all the focus groups, all of that, which the interim committee didn't do.
Yeah, I, I think I, yeah, I totally understand that, but I'm looking at the anticipated cost for the range of that, maybe, I mean, the money's like that, $20,000 probably. I, I, I'm not opposed, I mean, against the, you know, the firm search, I'm just ask, you know, what, what is the things we could not do, they can do, and what's the difference between our summer search and with this permanent search? And, you know, so if we can save additional cost, that's what I'm thinking, but I'm open to both ways, so, all right.
Let me just, in general, I would say that a consultant firm is collectively spending, I don't know, a couple hundred hours through the whole process. That's, a lot of it done behind the scenes in terms of planning. They have to plan, they have to plan out the focus group sessions, they take all of that data, they summarize it, they provide a report, you know, all of the logistics in terms of scheduling, in terms of putting together the recruitment materials. That takes time, and if you, if you have, if you don't have a consultant doing that, it means, in my experience, it means likely that school staff will do a lot of it. School committee members, based on the time that they have available, will do some of it. And the school staff who are involved have daily responsibilities that have to get done as well. And given, given the, the scope of this kind of process versus the interim process, it just makes sense to me that whether it's $12,000, $15,000, $20,000, I think it's money very, very well spent to ensure that, you know, all the i's are dotted, all the t's are crossed, all of the required vetting takes place. There's just so much more that goes into this process than the, the slides I showed, you know, could, could paint a picture for you.
Diane?
I agree. I don't, we don't have the, I don't believe we have the bandwidth to do this, kind of, and we don't have the national reach. I mean, I just, I, I, I really like the idea of using a screen, a search firm. I did want to just say one more thing. In my research online, if it makes anybody feel better, according to MASC, there's, it doesn't really matter when you advertise. Just a little tidbit. And then, the other thing, I'm looking at, I'm looking at all these dates for all of these different things that we're doing, the MSBA project, the start times, we, we have an enormous amount of very exciting things happening all at once. And I like the idea, I, I'm not so worried about the timing, because I, I like the idea of kind of putting the, moving, waiting till after December 4th. The, like, we're hopefully going to vote on start times around the 14th, the school building, the, the vote will be on December 4th, and then, I, I just think it's too much to ask the community to also come out for a superintendent search while they're coming out for the school building information sessions and while they're mulling over new homer policies and start new start times and all of the changes that are exciting, but it's a lot. So, I, I actually like your, your timeline, even though it does feel a little bit like late, on the late side.
Yep.
Diane? I just want to clarify something, which is one, it wasn't, I didn't want to start it till after December 4th, probably the, the week after, but you have on here that we're doing the focus groups, at the same time, we're doing the ad announcement. And I guess, I was under the impression, because the last superintendent search, I thought we did focus groups to find out what the requirements that the community wanted for our next superintendent, but if we're sending out the ad, because we were, we were very specific in what we wanted in the requirements, and those requirements were based on the focus groups, but if the focus groups are happening only three days before the ad is going out, obviously, the ad's written before the focus group, so what's the purpose of the focus groups?
Yeah.
Want to talk to that?
Sure. So, the purpose of the focus group will be to ultimately create a candidate profile, and that candidate profile will be approved, typically is approved by the school committee, and the candidate profile then becomes the major tool that the screening committee uses when they go through the screening and, screening of applications. So, it, it's, you know, the, the ad, the ad, in my experience, will be general in terms of, in terms of what, what the committee will be looking for. It will, it will identify minimum requirements that, again, the school committee will, will approve as part of the, as part of approving the recruitment and advertising materials. And, you know, I think that, again, when you have a search that, that necessarily is, is a tight timeframe, some of these activities do overlap. But, but again, you know, that is something that the firms, the organizations will provide us with more information about through their, through their responses. So, again, you know, this is just a big overview, and I'm sure that the firms will have more specific detail.
So, that's why I'd like, and I agree, if we can just get that firm in here and approved as soon as possible, and then we can just figure out the timeline, because that's our critical step right now, and then maybe they can do a lot of the work while we're working on the MSBA, so that the week after the December 4th meeting, we're, we're enrolling with the superintendent search.
All right, so I'm getting a sense from the committee that you do want to hire the search firm, so I'm going to ask that we send out a letter to the four major search firms, and hopefully we'll bring back proposals from them at our next meeting, and we can discuss at that point which ones we want to invite in for, to do a more formal presentation.
So, on the, do you remember which ones, do you remember, Bridget, which ones we invited last, the three we had last time?
Well, we used Future Management Systems.
Right.
That's who ran the, the last search, and the search before that, MASC ran for us.
We had, we invited three last time.
We did, and it, I want to say Nezdeck was one of them.
Yeah.
I can't remember who the third was. Do you remember the third?
Yeah, I think there was-
And somebody pulled out, that's right.
Right, okay. And then on the, for Bill, screening committee workshop, excuse me, the, the screening committee, I should say, is it, is it a requirement that a school committee member be on the screening committee, or can that be left up to judgment?
That's totally a school committee's-
That's a decision.
-decision.
Okay.
There are no requirements on the makeup of a screening or a search committee.
Okay.
Not having a school committee member on the screening or search committee, in, in my opinion, I've never seen that, and I, and I think that, I, I think having school committee representation is important to be on that committee.
Okay. Okay. And I'm assuming we don't have any of this budgeted, right?
Where does this fall in the budget? No, there is nothing specific. There's no specific lying item. So we would have to take a look at what resources may be available, which I think we could, we could find.
Anything that we come up with, or any charge that we give to either the screening committee or to the consulting firm will be in an open meeting, correct?
Everything we do will be in open meeting. It will be open, honest, transparent process. The only thing that is not done in open meeting is when the screening committee discusses candidates, before the final candidates are announced. Everything else will be done in public, open session.
To your point about the budget, though, just so you know, we did accelerate some of our capital spending that was planned for '18 and through extra resources last fiscal year, paid for some of that. So there's some flexibility. I also want to note that we do have an obligation to the teachers' union to have a representative on the screening committee.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, Paul.
Thank you, Mary, for pointing that out, because I was going to point out that the town of Acton is in the process of, of a search for a town manager. And they, the Board of Selectmen are leaving it to the community to do the groundwork. And I was going to suggest we do that, that that's a possibility for us as well. But, but hearing that we have some rules that we have to respect, then that's a different story.
Is there a public comment? Yeah. Now, I, I mean, I think, yep. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Heather Hare from 407 Central. Just wanted to just bring up a few things. That presentation was great, and I think your timeline is, you guys are spot on, and you're thinking in all the right directions. I sat on both the last two searches. So I just want to bring a couple of things to your attention as you're thinking about when you're going through this process. The three firms that you mentioned are certainly firms that are, you know, notable and reputable in, in Massachusetts. But I think, too, that we've used a few of them in the past, and we've had experiences with them, some not so great. And so if you could do your due diligence in terms of looking into what we've been through in the past, who we've used, what's worked and what hasn't, it might help you with your, with your search going forward. That being said, when you do choose a search firm, you know, bring them in here. There's a lot of different consultants within every firm, and everyone isn't right for A B. So pick the person that you, and you probably have a lot of great experience doing that, will be right for you. And I would say, take the time to interview them to make sure that they meet, you know, they meet your requirements. The other thing I was going to say about H Y A is exactly that, is that they take a lot of the control from, from you. And we have to always remember, too, that they're in this for business. You know, they, they're placing people that they want to, you know, they're making a lot of money, as you just saw. So we want to make sure that you're in control of what's right for Acton, Boxborough. And taking, you know, some of that work off your plate doesn't always mean the best end results. So just, you know, be cautious to that, too. But thank you so much for all you're doing. You have great, great leadership. So good luck.
Thanks. Okay, a public comment?
Angie, so two primer wait. Just clarification, that for the consulting firm, that can we provide requirements for them in terms of how many candidates they need to provide it, and how far of the marketing, how far of the research, then the searching process they provide? Can we do that?
I don't think we can, I don't think we can require them to produce X number of, of candidates who will go through the application process, because ultimately, that's up to individual candidates to determine if they want to go through the process. What is important, though, is to understand in, in, in doing our research on these organizations is, there are certain questions we can ask, like, what is your track record in attracting candidates? What's the typical candidate pool in the searches that you have completed? What are your recruiting processes? What tools do you use? So those are the kinds of, of questions that the committee can certainly pose to these groups. And as the previous speaker just indicated, you know, I think we need to pay very close attention, not just to that, but to, to the consultants that the firms are proposing work with us. And it's important to understand what their experiences are, what their frame of reference is, how many searches they've been involved in. And we can then research that. The one other thing, opportunity I want to take, take to say, in terms of previous comment, is, and I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. And I'll get back to you on that. I just lost my train of thought. Sorry.
Okay, so, so I'm going to move forward into the next agenda item unless there's anything else from the committee. Yep, but Bill has something else.
No, do, sorry, do we have a consensus?
Yeah, so we have a consensus that we're going to go forward. This is where, okay, can I just say it now? Yes. So we're going to move forward, and we're going to get those letters out as soon as possible. Okay? Thanks. All right, so we're going to move on to start times. Yep.
You're receiving your packet.
You receive, you received in your packet information about this agenda item. There's a memo in there from Marie and I, as well as a copy of the slide presentation. And Marie is going to lead us in the slide presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Our goal tonight is to give you an update on the work we're doing related to start times, as well as single-tier busing, because they've become very well-related in a timeline for our action steps. And there's a lot of information in your packet about it. To begin with, we do have a website dedicated to this topic. If you go to A B Schools, there's a start times link off of A B Schools. It's also here. On that, you'll find the Wellness Committee Report from the Wellness Committee of the 2015-2016 school year. That committee worked through the research around sleep and wellness. And as you remember, in June of that year, came with a recommendation that we further explore the possibility of changing the junior high and high school to later start times to increase sleep for our adolescents. Then last year, we had a consultant work with our Transportation Department and go through and do a very extensive look at single-tier busing, and how feasible it might be, and what the costs would be. And there's an extensive report on that with a link as well. And then the Start Time Committee, we did surveys, we looked at different models, and we came forward with a recommendation in June. So those are three very long reports, as well as presentations that have come before the committee over the last 18 months or so. And we recommend that folks go back and take a look at those. There's also, a lot of the research is on that website, as well as what some of the other school districts in the area are doing. The survey that we did last spring, we had about 2,700 responses. We brought forward at that time, four possible options to the public. Two of them assumed we were keeping the three tiers that we currently have, the three schedules for our eight schools. And two of them looked at the possibility of combining our elementary schools into a single schedule. And we're calling that elementary single-tier busing. So when we say single-tier, we mean for the elementary schools. So we currently have three schedules, one for the junior high high school, one for three elementary schools, one for the other three elementary schools. They alternate every other year. Everybody loves that part. And so when we put together two options that kept the current three tiers, we realized there's very little we can do in the way of start times, because you need about 40 minutes in between each tier. So we quickly began to focus on the two options that brought us to single-tier elementary and putting all the elementary schools on one schedule, which also has many other benefits that we'll talk about. So a lot of the written qualitative, as well as quantitative feedback from that survey talked about single-tier being beneficial. And then within that, 56% overall preferred the 8 o'clock high school junior high start to the 8:30 high school junior high start. And the 8:30 start meant moving the elementaries to 10 minutes of 8, so swapping elementary earlier than junior high and high school. 72% of the high school and junior high staff preferred the 8 o'clock start to the 8:30 start. So that was the start time survey. So the study about single-tier busing. We know that moving to a single elementary schedule means we're going to have to add buses. The estimate is 11 buses and drivers. And the cost here, a significant portion of our transportation costs are reimbursed by the state as a regional school district. $750 would be the cost to add 11 buses and drivers. In the first year, we'd have to pay the whole cost, because the state reimbursement is based on the previous year's costs. Starting in the second year, we would get the reimbursement on those additional costs. So in the second year and going forward, we're talking about $372,000. So I outlined here a possible model. As you know, we did a good job the last two years building E and D back up. It's at about $4 million right now. So the idea would be that next year, we take $570,000 out of E and D on a one-time basis. And then we'd increase the budget by $180,000 in that year. And then the next year, by $192,000. And that would, over two years, build the budget up to the 372 that you need to have after reimbursement. Okay? So E and D is at about $4 million. We've already committed $700,000 to the building projects. This would be another $570,000. So we're talking about almost $1.3 million of the $4 million, which is exactly what we put in this year. If you remember, we went from $2.7 million to $4 million. So it would bring us back to $2.7. Separate from that, we were using $450 in the budget this year, that we'd also anticipate needing to put back to keep it flat at that $2.7. Did that, everybody follow that? Okay. All right. Now, that's the financial side. The logistical side is quite complicated. And so last year, we had the consultants work through it with us. Now we're really trying to put pen to paper, to put buses on the road, to model the routes, to look at traffic, to do all the things we have to do to verify that this is actually going to work. It's probably not great to talk about it the first month of school, when we're still ironing out all the bus routes. One thing about flipping the bus schedules every year is, I'm going to quote J D, poor guy, "We're rebuilding bus routes every single year," because every year, we're swapping schedules for all those schools. So it takes a few weeks to get everything ironed out and to get things moving. And then you throw in some tree work and some other kind of, you know, paving and so on. So we're looking at really changing the operation if we're talking about going to single-tier busing. So J D has already worked with the consultant from last year, and they've, they're scheduling time to actually get buses from a contractor, to get 11 additional buses, and run these routes as if we had single-tier busing. And run them on a school day, run them possibly on a weekend as well. I think he's scheduled to do it on Election Day, when we have Professional Day. It's as close to sort of a real simulation as we can do. We have difficulty fully staffing the 43 bus drivers, 44 bus drivers we need in today's operation. In fact, we're down three or four right now. And we have been each of the last three years at the beginning of school. So again, J D's being very creative about it. We're going to create some bids and go out and see if we can bid part of the operation, all of the operation, partner with a contractor, et cetera. That all has to work out before we know for sure we can do this. So again, we're scheduling doing that over the next six to eight weeks, so that we have those answers for you. All right? So the transportation piece is a huge piece of this, the staffing, the cost, the logistics, the routes, et cetera. And J D is here to back us up and to answer questions. All right. We have more data around preferences. So the high school has been, as you know, working on potential alternate schedules to their bell schedule. Their current schedule has their eight-period day. Last year, they spent the whole year, they came up with lots of different models. They've been working with staff. They surveyed kids, students, staff, parents about the schedules. They thought they might be moving towards a potential schedule change for next year, and they're not ready to move yet. So they are going to pilot a potential schedule in March of this year for a couple of weeks. All right? So a high school bell schedule change is a huge change, instructionally, teaching and learning and students, et cetera. So where they are right now is that they're planning to do a two-week pilot in March, and then they'll continue to go through the decision-making process. So within that survey, they asked some questions about start times. The feedback consistently preferred the 8 o'clock start across all groups. So the students, 1,167 students responded, 59% of them. And these options were 7:50 to 2:30, 8 o'clock to 2:40, 8:30 to 3:10, 8:50 to 3:30. 59% preferred the 8 o'clock to 2:40. 32% preferred 7:50 to 2:30. And 39% preferred the 8:30. Parents and guardians, a little bit closer, 51 preferred the 8, 8 o'clock. 25% preferred 7:50. 45% preferred 8:30. Faculty staff, 65% preferred 8 o'clock, and 43% preferred 8, 7:50. And that was consistent with the other survey that we did. All right. Then when we look at other districts, lots of districts are looking at this, talking about this. We had several meetings last year with superintendents, high school principals, and athletic directors from across the D C L. The Middle Sex League was doing the same thing. There's a lot of momentum and conversation about this. Interestingly, not a lot of districts have made a lot of movement yet. Sharon was one of the first ones. They moved from 7:25 to 8:05. They get out at 2:40, and they made that change in 2011. They get out at two-forty, and they made that change in 2011. Ashland moved from seven-thirty to eight-twenty. They get out at two-forty-five, and they did that in 2017. Conca-Carlile just made the change from seven-thirty to eight, again, in 2017. So, Conca-Carlile is eight to two-forty-one, which is exactly what we surveyed people about, and what kind of our survey showed as the preference. I put in a whole bunch of the rest of the DCL. Most of them are starting around seven-thirty, seven-thirty-five, seven-forty-five, and getting out around two-twenty-five or so. LS is at seven-fifty to two-forty.
What's DCL?
Good question.
I'm not a, I'm just thinking it's athletics, but...
It's the dual-county league, so it's the athletic league that AB belongs to. So, the point of this is not that it's all about athletics necessarily, but there is a point to be made. If we were to go to eight-thirty, so there was talk at the state level about considering legislation to have schools go to eight-thirty, to have high schools go to eight-thirty, if the state were to move wholesale, it would make it a lot easier, because then, all kinds of extracurricular activities would be scheduled to coincide with that. If we go individual districts, it's a lot harder. So, we're continuing the conversation with our neighboring districts and so on. Bill, do you want to add anything to that, or not yet, or?
No.
Okay. All right. So, the point I just made, consistency with other districts for extracurriculars. Here at AB, we share fields with our own teams. So, we might have a team on the field from two-thirty to four, a team on the field from four to five-thirty, and then, the band from six to eight. That's an example, a pretty typical example. We have lights on a couple of our fields, we have other fields that don't have lights, and so on. So, in general, our high school activities are scheduled to end by six, other than a night game or the band. Partly because of the dark, partly because other activities are scheduled. So, that's one of the things we want to think about. There was quite a bit of feedback about, if we switch with the elementary, would the elementary be so early that the buses would be in the dark? There would certainly be certain weeks where that could potentially happen. Early in the fall, you end up with, you know, around seven to seven-ten. There's some feedback about older siblings caring for elementary students. And then, this last bullet is, the survey we sent out kind of put junior high and high school in the same schedule, kind of eight to two-forty. But realistically, we need to have a seven-minute gap between the junior high and high school, so that we can drop the kids off and then, come down to the other school. And we even talked about, could we put half the buses at one school, half the buses at the other school, and have the kids walk between? And we were sort of exploring that, but, the winter, the ice, the hill, one narrow sidewalk, et cetera, so we're not sure that that would be very feasible. So, we come forward with all that taken into account with this as a working model. This isn't, by no means, a final decision. We want to bring it to you, we want you to think about it, give us feedback, talk about it, and we're going to continue our work exploring how this works, and how we can work through the logistics of busing, and budget, and all of those things. So, we're thinking about swapping the junior high to be a little bit earlier than the high school. Right now, the jun, it's the other way around. So, junior high, eight to two-thirty-six, which is thirty minutes later than it is now. High school, eight-oh-seven to two-forty-seven, which is forty-four minutes later. And elementary, eight-fifty-five to three-twenty-five, which is five minutes earlier than the late schedule. All right? So, I'll come back to this slide in a minute, but this is what we've been working through as our working model. So, I'll come back to this. So, our timeline was to give you this update tonight. JD and Bill and Dave Verdolino are working through bus bids, the modeling of the single-tier routes, and really pursuing the viability of that. November, we'll get that information back, update our cost estimates. We want to hear more feedback about this as a model, and whether there are any shifting to the model, finalize our recommendations. We want to come back to the school committee on December seventh with the final recommendation, in hopes that you'll make a decision on December fourteenth, so that we'll be in line to implement for September. So, this is our timeline. I'll come back to the model. Bill, do you want to add anything before we take questions?
Thank you. No, Marie, thank you for the presentation. I think you laid out, you know, what our current status is very clearly, and we believe that, you know, we are in a position, as Marie just talked about, to come back to you in December for a decision, and, which will allow us to move forward and bring this, bring this process full cycle.
I do want to say, Marie, thank you so much. This is really very well laid out, very clear, and I know there was a lot of work behind it, so, thank you very much. Diane.
Yeah, I did. Thanks. It's funny, I was, I was looking at the data, and I know we had looked at it before, and I was wondering, because of the delay of the high school schedule, which I think is great, you know, we're delaying that just at least to get, it helps with the whole start time, to focus on the start time. I would like to, at one point, and I'm hoping that this will be open later, because we always talk about, if we had switched the elementary with the high school, that the kids are going in the dark, but, our times are later, so like, the ten minutes, actually, of a change. Right now, our school starts at seven-twenty-three and seven-thirty, just going to seven-forty, they're no longer in the dark, just, just so you know, because the kids end up in the bus, but by the time they're at school, it's light. So, what I'm leading to is that, if we look at other districts who actually did switch, because the recommended time for high school students is really eight-thirty, right, that's the national standard that they recommend, whether it's doable or not, that is the recommendation. If we can at least leave ourselves open to possibly looking at that in the future, because other districts, like you said, Ashland is eight-twenty, Duxbury is eight-twenty, and the other thing I was confused about is, they're eight-twenty, ending at two-forty-seven, and we're eight-oh-seven, ending at two-forty-seven. And, I think that that difference is because of the way we do our scheduling at the high school. I don't, I don't know why our, our day ends up having to be longer. So, if, if those things at least can be possibly open to look at, once we, when, when the high school is looking at their scheduling, if they can look at that, because that does seem odd. I mean, again, Duxbury is eight-twenty to two-forty-seven, and I think Ashland is eight-twenty to two-forty-five, right? So, they're, they figured out a way to start at eight-twenty and end at a reasonable time that parents and students and teams can actually function. So, just to at least leave that open, to think about, because I think moving to the one tier is a huge step, and then, the start time moving to eight, and then, possibly, ultimately getting to that recommended standard.
So, can I respond to a couple of things? So, the first thing is, the switching with elementary, the start time report in the spring said that no districts in Massachusetts have done that. To our understanding, no districts have done that.
Duxbury has.
With elementary before, I think? Okay. We just read that Wilmington is considering doing that, or possibly moving towards doing that. So, I'll just say that it, it's a little bit trickier, because if you move elementary before, you have to move high school later than we're moving it. The meetings between the leagues, both Middlesex and DCL, talked about not ending past three. So, if we move to eight-thirty, we're going to be at least three-ten, sometime between three-ten and three-thirty.
But that's why I'm saying, again, and it's something to look forward to in the future, but, they're, they're able to get to eight-twenty. I don't think we could ever get to eight-thirty.
So, that's the second part. So, our current high school is six hours and fifty-five minutes, all right? In this model that we're giving you, it's actually six hours and forty minutes. Some of those schools are six-thirty, some are six-forty, some are six-forty-five. It depends a lot on their bell schedule. We have a longer lunch, that's the big difference between us and a lot of districts, it's one of the things they're looking at with the schedule. So, we already cut it from six-fifty-five to six-forty, even though they're not changing their bell schedule. We're going to shorten periods by a couple of minutes to get us to six-forty, but you're exactly right. Every five or ten minutes makes a difference in this model. So, once they're done with their work, so this would, we would talk about this as being our first year, doing the best we can. We got to eight-oh-seven, so every sort of ten minutes is going to help. So, depending where the high school ends up after that, it's possible we could get a few more minutes in there, so. Yep?
You want to take JD first? So, I'm, thanks for laying it out like this. I think it's great to have a schedule of the decision timeline for this. We've been talking about this for years now, and I think, you know, now is when we need to make a decision, one way or the other. So, thanks for laying that out. I think families are going to find it really useful to see the calendar of decision-making. So, that's terrific. With respect to the busing and the single-tier, I think, you know, this is, this is really tough, because we're talking about a lot of money, and the budget impact is one thing. And I always go back to, when you're looking at budget items, it's a real statement of the district's priorities. So, the tough part this year is, we've got lots of priorities. We've got a big building project that we're going to try to get past. We've got capital needs that are outside of the building project, that we really need to focus on, that haven't been focused on in the past. And we haven't even discussed any other educational priorities that are likely going to come up in the budget process. So, that being said, I think we need to make a decision here, and, single-tier busing, in my mind, is really important for the elementary schools. I think it will solve a lot of issues, it will help us get to where we need to be on the earlier, on the later start time for the older students. But I think it's going to be really important for families to engage in this budget process. I think we're going to really need to hear from the public about whether this priority in spending money to get to a single-tier busing is what the community wants us to be doing. So, I think community engagement's going to be really important for that. I think it's important, an important step, and I, right now, without seeing any other budget priorities, I think it's a very important thing for us to do. I question, you know, the drivers. I know we've been short bus drivers, I know that's been a constant struggle, so why is that? Are we not paying enough? Is there some other impediment to hiring that we can deal with? That seems to me to be a solvable problem, easy for me to say, because I'm not interviewing and hiring drivers, I see JD back there, so, sorry JD. I know that's a, that's a challenge, but it seems like that should be something that we could solve, long-term, one way or the other. And then, just one more comment, going back to the bell schedule and I, the two-week trial, is that really long enough to figure out what they need to know about a bell schedule change? I just throw that out there, I'm sure we'll hear more about that later. That's it for now. So, thank you very much. I thought this was really well laid out.
I consider lots, my question is, what was it?
Diane?
So, I'm so excited that we broke eight o'clock, so, I was hoping, eight-thirty's certainly the goal, but, I was, I was kind of hoping that this would happen after eight o'clock, and even seven minutes would be great. Just a reminder that on the survey, the no-cost option had the high school starting at seven-fifty, and then, the elementary school starting at eight-forty, and then, nine-twenty. So, just keep that in mind.
And ending at three-fifty.
Okay, yep. Really smart to, to bump the, the high school schedule change, to try to, like, just have, have the start times worked out in terms of the, the traffic and the timing and all that. I think that's really smart, to, to not just jump, jump in with the, with the, with the pilot earlier. So, I just, you know, just think it's a really smart thing to do. I did have one question, actually, a comment, it's about the busing. One is the timeline, and one is just a, an FYI from the comparative community study. Most of our comparative communities are contracting out for in-stistrict bus service, and though there are many cost drivers, they have a per-pupil cost in that area that, that's less than ours. So, but again, there are more than this, there, there are many cost drivers to, that are behind the, the per-pupil cost for transportation. On the timeline, we would, it says bus bids for a model, single-tier routes in October, but we're not voting on this till December fourteenth. So, would we have to actually whip a bid out before we vote?
So, October is preparing the bids, and then, there's a process, and it takes time, and so on.
Yep.
So, we need to, so, the point that you raised, we've gone out to bid for the potential of contracting the whole operation and various pieces of it, three or four times in the last five years, and we're not getting bids. We have a very complicated operation. So, we're really hoping to be able to work our way through that and, and develop it, either a piece of this business or all of it that is attractive to a contractor. We have school choice, we have two towns, we have people going to any school, and it's, it's very unusual, and so, we have a very large transportation organization.
So, there's a risk that we'll try to contract out, but won't have any takers?
There's a risk, which is why we want to do that early enough. We can't have you make the decision and then, not be able to deliver.
Just one thing, because it does come up every year, we go through this, and thank you for answering it. School choice is a huge cost on our transportation system. I mean, it's, it's, and it creates a lot of limitations in our district, it really does. I, I did have a question with the, the piloting in March. My only concern is, you're going to change the scheduling, is that going to impact learning at all? Right? Because they're going to, they're going to do this pilot, and it, it is going to be a huge impact on the, the school, but is it going to affect learning time with the students? You know?
Deb, do you want to answer?
So, overall, I mean, I think that's why they chose the two weeks, so it won't, it'll be as least disruptive as possible, but long enough for them to get a sense of how the change is in the time, what they need to do within that timeframe if they have students, and how that's going to impact some of the practices, and some of the work they need to do around their whole year's worth of planning and thinking about the units, and how those units are spaced out, the kind of homework that goes along with that, and assignments that go along with that. So, it'll give them enough information that they can then continue that work through the summer and into next year to prepare for it. But, I think they'll try to keep the, any kind of the impact, of course, to the minimum, but, just long enough to get them enough information.
Just because, again, I know every year, and hopefully, it's not a bad winter, but I know some of those classes run into issues with getting their, all their learning done before, like, say, AP tests or a bunch of different things, and they, they struggle already.
So, they're using a lot of their professional time this year in planning and thinking about how they're going to put that, those two weeks into, to effect? Yep.
Thank you, Marie. I, I want to go back to slide three. Yeah. Hang on. Slide three, we have, oh yeah, there it is, that fourth bullet down is fifty-six percent preferred, but when I look at the, the stats on slides, what is it, seven, eight, and nine?
Yep.
I don't see the fifty-six percent.
Two completely different surveys. So, this was the survey that was done by the start time committee of the full community, and so, it had pre-K-12, parents, community members, and staff. And then, the other one was done by the high school, high school students, high school parents, guardians, and high school staff.
And looking at that statistic, or the fifty-six percent, I...
In looking at that statistic, or the fifty-six percent, I just wonder, based on where we might possibly be moving in terms of state legislature, in terms of what we've read in the research, I mean, doesn't that sort of push us over in the rationale? I'm just surprised the committee didn't want to bump it past eight AM more so because of the data. And so, I'm, I'm like, a little disappointed by the eight versus eight-thirty or an eight-twenty start. And I think that we could be trendsetters here. Yes, a lot of other schools haven't even moved their start time within our, what did you call it? The D.C.U.?
D.C.L.
D.C.L. And so, you know, we could make that push and, and perhaps help, help other schools, you know, move further away from eight AM. And so, again, I, I think this is an opportunity for us to be more progressive. Second, people were talking about a potential problem with busing and the single tier. And I think one of the things that we're going to have to fold into community engagement, as Bridget was, was rightly stating, is, is an important feature here, is that we have a hard time probably getting a lot of bus drivers because it's not a full-time position, and we don't pay them a lot of money. And it's a high-stress job with a lot of responsibility. And when we think about the costs of eleven new buses, and, you know, we probably need to start a conversation about, you know, these positions and how we're paying them, because we seem to always be struggling to find good bus drivers and to retain them. And to train them is also expensive. I think for our complicated system and, and all that it provides to people, we, we have to start educating people about the costs of it. As we talk about the eleven new buses, I really think we need to start throwing out some more education around the drivers and the, you know, how we're paying them, and, and that might, that might have inherent problems for us.
So, we did a pretty extensive study a year to a year and a half ago about what they're being paid everywhere, contractors, other districts, and so on. And we actually completely restructured how we're paying them. We had a flat rate. We now have a step schedule, which gave a lot of them increases, as well as a path towards increases and incentive to stay. And we were really excited about it. And we thought we were fully staffed at the end of July, and here we are. One of the issues is, they're "full-time," quote-unquote, but it's roughly thirty hours a week, school weeks. So, it's, that's one of the inherent issues with school-year employment, you know? It's, so, we're definitely looking at it as creatively as we can, within reason, with our budgetary constraints as well. But we're trying to be as creative as we can.
I was on the start time committee, and one of the things that's fascinating to me about looking at the faculty-staff survey that we didn't give is the start time committee that was given by the high school. I'm kind of curious why, sort of speaking to what Maya was saying about, you know, the research shows this, and on the start time committee, we talked about that quite a bit. There's a lot of pushback on that faculty-staff survey that I think we have to talk about going forward, because why do almost half of our faculty and staff think it, think it seven-fifty is a, is a better choice than, you know, even moving forward? And, you know, only thirty-seven percent chose eight-thirty, and even less than that chose eight-fifty. So, you know, I, I have the utmost respect for our staff. I'm not, I'm not saying that, but that seems like a significant piece of the puzzle that, you know, they're, they're not interested in doing.
And in this survey, seventy-two percent of them chose eight over eight-thirty. And just a couple of things. Partly, a large percentage of them are involved in supervising the after-school activities, so they're well aware of two-thirty to five, five-thirty. And so then, if we start an hour later, are we going an hour later? And then, does that just end up an hour later at the end time for the kids, at ten o'clock or eleven o'clock at night? And the other thing is, it's all a trade-off. So, to Maya's point, if we were more progressive and went with the eight-thirty, but then the elementary's at seven-forty-five, so then the buses are at seven, give or take ten minutes, or elementary's at nine-fifteen, nine-twenty, getting out at four. So, this just felt, the model we came forward with, it's not quite the eight-thirty, but it's eight-oh-seven. And it felt like a really good balance of everybody's needs. The eight-thirty is the recommendation of the American Academy of Pediatrics. We're coming from seven-twenty-three to eight-oh-seven, so forty-four minutes of gain here. So, that was kind of our recommendation. I'm going to take a seat, because I think you have members of the public. We're happy to continue to answer questions.
Yeah, let's, yeah, Mary, go ahead.
I just wanted to comment that we also have to remember, teachers are often parents, and they, you know, so that whole issue of if the whole state went, then maybe they'd be more open to later times. But if their, the districts their kids are in aren't changing, it makes their parenting more challenging. So, you know, just something to think about.
Aline?
So, I think, I heard everybody, and, first of all, I, I love this whole presentation put together, a lot of things, summary very well. Thank you so much, Marie. And also, I, I think everybody probably aware of the transportation change recently. We did not thank J.D. for that late bus yet. So, maybe let's give him applause for the late bus. The late bus has been running for...
How many weeks?
Two weeks. And I think a lot of parent and student benefited from it. That's a great, great service.
Yeah, I'm benefiting from it. I am personally. So, thank you very much, J.D. I appreciate it.
So, so that is one thing related with, like Maya mentioned that. And I have two high school students now. And as a parent, I prefer eight-thirty, nine o'clock. But however, eight o'clock, just like Marie said, is really a balance between the elementary school student and high school student. We have, we pushed it back from seven-twenty-three all the way to eight-oh-seven. That's really a great change. And so, I love the whole thing, the proposal. But, again, I have to echo with Bridget, which is the, the point. I mentioned during some of our meeting, and I think, you know, Amy really mentioned to me, if we meant to change it, we really meant to change it to the single tier of the elementary bus system. However, we read that survey, the, one of the options is, I, I forgot, it's seven-fifty or seven-fifty-five, just for high school start time, without changing bus transportation system, without touching any dollars. And we can move that change to seven-fifty or seven-fifty-five. I forgot. What, what is that? Maybe seven-fifty or seven-fifty-five. That will push our schedule from seven-twenty-three to, let's say, seven-fifty, twenty-seven minutes. I'm really happy with that, without adding any dollar to our system. If we really need to focus on our building project, this project and that project, and our community side, decide, you know, those, the start time really is very important, but we can push twenty-seven minutes, or maybe thirty, around thirty minutes back for the high school student without the budgeting increasing, I'd rather to do that.
Do you want to speak to that?
Just that, there was an option that had the junior high high school starting at seven-fifty. The elementary schedule then, the late schedule becomes nine-twenty to three-fifty. And honestly, it would be probably four o'clock, because the, the time between the tiers wasn't as much as we needed to be. So, just, again, there are trade-offs. So, we could, without going to single tier, move, and again, the junior high high school have to be seven minutes apart. So, we could have junior high at seven-forty-three, high school at seven-fifty, but the elementary now will be nine-twenty to four o'clock, or nine-twenty-five to four o'clock.
Yeah, I, I think the whole talking here is, I just want to echo Bridget. So, our, this whole start time project is meant to change high school schedule. I mean, it's, I shouldn't say that, but it's kind of like, really help high students, student, high school students have the really very early start time. That's probably the priority between the whole schedule, right? Inside the whole schedule. If we do not have enough dollars to do that, to do the whole very perfect world like that, I really love that. But if we have to somehow delay this perfect picture, and we, we may still can do seven-fifty next year, two thousand and eighteen, that's just, you know, I mentioned that somewhere, sometime in our meeting. That's just, you know, just echo Bridget said that. That's, that's it. But anyway, that's a very wonderful presentation. I love that very much. Eventually, I hope that is our whole picture. Thank you so much, Marie.
Okay, so we're running a little bit late. If there are some more comments, feel free. I don't want to cut anybody off. But, go ahead, Paul.
So, I just wanted to point out that, that when this was first presented to me, I thought that the perfect solution would be more time for the students in the high school, suggesting that eight-thirty would be the, the ideal. So, I, I don't view eight-oh-seven as the ideal. I'm viewing that as the, as a trade-off with the realities that we're facing. So, anyway, just thought I'd put that out.
And I just wanted to add, I agree with Bridget with the, the budgetary impact, but one of our main goals is mental health, and that has to be prioritized over anything. You know, we had a bad year last year, and the studies show that sleep is a huge impact on teenage mental awareness and their ability to handle stress and, and any kind of difficulties. And to me, I think, Marie, you, you came up with just a wonderful compromise of not having parents have to pick up their children at four o'clock, which I know the elementary school parents greatly appreciate, because four o'clock, you can't even, you, you have to pick your kids up. So, the, the schools would be unbelievably crowded. And handling the mental health impact. And I think that's how, you know, if this works, that's how we really have to sell it, is, you know, there's no best answer. But, but you, you definitely came up with a great compromise. So, I appreciate that.
Okay, we have a member of the public that would like to speak, and then we can move on.
Hi, I'm Steve Ballard from Boxboro. Yeah, I liked this conversation, and I just wanted to say, the people in the Facebook group seem to be very agitated about the start time issue, and very, and I'm being one of them. I, and I, to me, it seems like, I, I was for option three. And I see, as Deanne said, that actually, as you're moving the times later, there's no problem with the children in the elementary school levels, you know, being up too early while it's dark. But what I see, I mean, the, the obvious solution to me is, when you put school choice into the question, into the picture, and you put that into the modeling, then you can see, whether it's option three or four, everyone can start after eight o'clock, and you can have single-tier busing for the elementary schools that aren't twelve or thirteen miles long, if you have district schools, which most kids have anyway. I mean, like those of us in Blanchard or in Boxboro really have a, a district school. So, I don't know. And I think there's the assumption that people out there don't want to touch that sacred cow, the school choice. But if you put it into the model, and you show, we can save money on transportation, we can have elementary school kids on the bus for shorter periods of time, and, you know, the frameworks pretty much, you know, have changed, so that there isn't a whole lot of difference between schools anyway, my, my view. And so, I mean, to me, is there any talk of, of doing this, of actually looking at school choice? Because all I hear is two variables here. I hear, you know, the bus transportation, whether it's three tiers down to two tiers, or two tiers down to one with the elementary school, and start times. So, to me, it makes more sense, you get to, to where Ashland is, or, you know, perhaps they'll even get to eight-ten, and my ideal will be eight-ten in the morning for elementary and eight-fifty for high school. And, you know, dual county league, I mean, come on. We, you know, what's the priority? And is it a priority what the, what the teachers want? I mean, all the teachers want it to start earlier, but it should be about mental health. And we have the, you know, if you can save money, and you can get kids to school more efficiently, and, you know, get high school kids and junior high school kids to sleep more, it makes sense. So, why don't we look at school choice? I'm wondering if that's, contemplate, I know like, the next year, we're going to do this little baby step, but perhaps, within two years, if we were to do something in the summer, maybe a conference on school choice, or forums or something, maybe you'll find that people are not so wedded to the ideal school choice if they look at all the variables and see the big picture. So, I...
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so I'm going to move forward to the next agenda, unless there's any more further comments. Okay. So, I'm going to hand it over to you, district goals.
Thank you, Amy. In your packet, we provided you with the materials from the last meeting. And, and the goal for tonight, or the request, is for you to approve the school year goals as presented. There was a conversation at the end of our presentation at the last meeting, in which I did ask committee members if you had any concerns or questions, comments, to feel free to pass them along. Perhaps you've saved them for tonight, and that's fine. We'll try to answer them. But I think, I think the important piece for us in finalizing the school year goals, to give you context, was the presentation that we just had on school start times. To me, that's one of the bigger goals in our, in our presentation. So, hopefully, that's, that provided you with more information, more context around that particular goal.
Okay, so if there are no more, if there are questions or comments from the committee, and if not, then I'm looking for a motion to accept. Yep, no, please.
I have to remember my question now. Am I remembering correctly, Don? You said that the culture and climate survey was going to start at the secondary level. And I wanted to understand your rationale for starting at the secondary level and not at the primary level, if I'm remembering correctly.
It was the equity audit we were talking about, which, within it, would actually give us a lot of data on culture and climate within the context of equity in, across the district. We had thought, part of it was a scope issue in terms of capacity here, fiscal implications, all those sorts of pieces, in terms of how do we scale back an enormous thing. We also have had, started to have some conversations and looked at data through a few different lenses around how, sort of how differences play out at the secondary level. And those are not necessarily present at the elementary level. So, sort of looking at how maybe differences among schools, or among, you know, whether it's staffing or curriculum, or whatever sorts of play, sort of plays out, in terms of kids' preparation and entry and launch at grade seven through twelve. So, then sort of backing it up with some more data around what does that look like for students, I think. Is that a fair description of that?
So, the scope of the survey ultimately is rather large, but you'll start with that demographic.
Exactly. That was our thinking.
And we will look at the data by sending elementary school as subgroups, along with all the other subgroups. But, so, we thought we could get elementary data by looking at secondary kids, if that makes sense.
And equally as important... And equally as important, by starting at the secondary level, it will provide a lot of good context to the next step where we go into the elementary schools, because we will be able to have collected that data by school in terms of what's happening at the secondary level, and that will give us some more concrete direction in terms of going then, bringing that, bringing that information and collecting that information actually at the elementary level.
Oops, sorry, Dan?
So I'm sorry if I totally missed it. But, you know, with the goal, you have to have something that's measurable. How do we measure the MTSS? I mean, there's no dates, there's no, I'm just wondering, how do we measure that goal? What are we expecting for the end of the year in regards to that? Because there's, it's very high level, it just seems, it doesn't have any specifics about what we can actually measure against.
When we put these goals together, our, one of our intention was to kind of take a step back from where we have been the last couple of years, especially in terms of the number of action items that had specific benchmarks, which, and measurable outcomes which require really, some really specific work to get there. In terms of the equity MTSS, I look at it as really kind of continuing the exploration that happened last year. And so, we don't, we're not really sure what those specific outcomes will be this year, but we will, we will, we will certainly report out on the progress of these goals, and we'll do that. We haven't talked about this internally, but I believe that on some of these, you'll get, you'll get periodic updates. For example, with the school start, given our goal, given our schedule, our timeline, you'll be getting those periodic updates with, with some of these other pieces. We have to do a little more work internally to determine how we'll provide you with those updates. My hope is that it's not just, you know, a report that comes out at the end of June, but that we'll be able to provide you pieces of information as we go through that process. And, and I think, and if Don or Deb want to speak to this, I would welcome that as well, but we're still, we're still working through the process of determining whether there'll be a consultant, whether that consultancy, who that consultant will be. We've talked about working with the Regional Equity Center to do some of this work with out cost, so we still have some of that to work through, and we'll keep you posted on the progress. Deb, Don?
Yeah, Deb has one piece about cultural proficiency, but the other piece around any of the work is that there are deliverables from those companies identified within the scope and sequence. We're waiting on actually the Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium, their final piece. We sent some more information to them last week. But they would have deliverables as well as recommendations. That's one of the specific things that we scoped out, was around recommendations. So once we start to think about those, explore them a little bit, then that would be when those things would, what you're talking about would kick in.
Right, but, but I mean, it's still, it's still a goal, like, and it's still supposed to have some definition of, by the end of the year, where do we expect? Do we want, do we want to have those outcomes? We want to have a certain percentage of the staff, you know, defined as being, you know, trained in MTS? It just, it just feels, I mean, I'm sorry, because I'm not getting it. It just feels like we're, we're not being definitive of, you know, it feels very wishy-washy, and I'm sure it's not, but just for me, it just feels like we, there are deliverables, like, and in your mind, you know what your deliverables are. You want, you want this company to provide you with this information. And to me, those are your subset of goals, so maybe at one point, if we can just get that of, you know, we expect this to happen from the consultant company, we expect this, you know, and by these dates, and then we're going to be able to present something to you, you know, in regards to this, by this specific date. It just, it just feels like there should be some meat to the bone, and I'm horrible with saying, Paul's the best with that, but it just feels like, it just feels like there needs to be more around it in regards to something that can be measured. I just don't feel like the goal, the way it's stated, can be measured at all.
So I think, Deanne, if you, there's a summary page that was provided in your packet that was, is just that, a summary. If you go into the strategic plan document, you'll notice that there are three goals, there are, there are a number of action items under each goal. If you go especially into Goals, Goals One and Three, you'll find that they're very specific, there are deliverables clearly identified, that it just happens that under Goal Two, around the MTSS and in particular, the equity audit, yeah, it's, it is a little, it is a little obtuse frankly, but we're working through that. And I understand what you're saying, but, you know, I see these, these goals in particular, that one, as part of an iterative and evolutionary process as we go through this year, because we're still gathering information and learning about it, but it's important enough to put in the goal statement, because we feel that it is important to provide us more data and more understanding before we actually get into kind of the nuts and bolts of implementing the MT, the MTSS system. So your concern is noted, but I feel confident that we can address those concerns as we go through the year.
Okay, yeah, Paul?
So my understanding with the MTSS is that we're actually pretty close to conforming to the, to the philosophy of MTSS. It's just that we have different schools that do different things and are implementing MTSS, and correct me if I'm wrong, but is more district-wide approach to doing it. But I'm wondering, just hearing what we're, what's being discussed now, is that if we have the study done for the equity, and they come up with recommendations, then the, then the goal would be, you know, the deliverable would be recommendations for us to consider implementing.
One of the, I would like to correct you. I think we are in lots of different places around the MTSS work at the moment, but one of the key recommendations or sort of findings that came out of the MTSS work that we engaged in last year with our self-assessment, was that we needed a backup, unless we wanted really three separate places for students to get support. So there's support in general education, there's support in special education, and if we just sort of plow ahead with implementing MTSS, we're literally overlaying another system without really dealing with some of the root causes around structures, beliefs, practices, folks' ability to understand, you know, sort of where different kids are and support them, so really around capacity. And so one of the key recommendations that came out sort of caused us to pause and back up a little bit, which is where the equity piece came in, which really gets at those. But it also tied into the culture and climate piece that I know was of concern to the committee. And there are three specific things that are identified in the long-range strategic plan, as Bill identified earlier. The professional learning, very specific learning, six different sessions for the leadership team this year, as well as determining a tool, the specific questions that we'll identify, and then a completed equity audit with recommendations, and an implementation plan, which would have some of those pieces. So those are there in the long-range strategic plan.
Diane?
I'm sorry if this question is ignorant, but are we evaluating the superintendent based on these goals, or are these different? These are the long-range strategic plan, and is that different from the superintendent's goals?
That's a good question. You won't be formally evaluating the interim superintendent this year, but we will go through a process in mid-year, which will, which is envisioned to provide the committee with some practice around the superintendent evaluation process, but the focus will be on, so the focus will be on these goals. But per se, you'll really be evaluating the district's progress on the goals at that point in time.
I see the goals as populating the long-range strategic plan. The goals are the steps through which we reach those long-term, longer-term goals.
Okay, so, so I'll just throw this out there then. So if we are evaluating based on these, then the, so George Bash's data could be, like, that's our baseline, and so I think what, just responding to what Dan said, is there some measurable that we could have in there that shows some movement from baseline?
Perhaps we could update it once you get some kind of agreement with the different consultants.
I think that's, that's exactly right, and I think that was what I was trying to say earlier, so I should have been more clear about that. Sorry.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll move to approve the goals for 2017, 2018.
All those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? Thank you very much. We're going to move forward now to item 10, the School Building Committee update, and I'm going to turn that over to Mary.
I'm going to turn it over to Dave and Marie, so starting with the motion language that you guys have put together.
Thank you. You have in your packets a one-page, two-sided that says in a couple of places, form of vote or form of article, and it's possible that that might have been a bit confusing, so I'm going to try and unconfuse you. The MSBA provides suggested language when you're at this stage of a project. The suggested language typically can be used as-is, but in this case, because their language anticipated funding by borrowing, we had to modify it because the district is planning on using E and D funds. You'll notice that in the, in the, in the form of vote, in all three cases, the number is $1,003, you're required to vote the entire, the entire cost of the undertaking, and in each case, at the end of the wording, it provides language that says that whatever is spent, whatever is authorized will be reduced by the amount of the grant reimbursement. They won't, they won't, they won't allow the specifics of their reimbursement to be put into the, into the wording at this stage. The language, as I said, had to be modified because of use of E and D, and also the project description, which is peculiar to what AB's project is, had to be put in. And so the description, in other words, what is being funded, or the purpose, as you see in the second line of the, of the first, of the first motion. The wording that's in here incorporated MSBA's suggestion, including the costs of a feasibility study and schematic design relating to the C.T. Douglas Elementary School Statement of Interest, including all incidental and relating costs, and expended at the discretion of the School Building Committee. All of that language has been, has been approved unofficially by MSBA. I spoke with someone there, Marie spoke with someone there and made, made some amendments as well to what you see. So there are three sets of language in this, in this handout. The first one, form of vote for Regional School Committee, is AB School Committee's appropriation. Okay, so we're, so the committee would be voting to appropriate $1,003, subject to reimbursement, et cetera. That would be sufficient if the district could expend from E and D without additional action by the member towns. So the second one is recommended wording for the article to be placed on the town meeting warrants. In my view, this should accompany a formal request by the school committee to each town, which I think is the standard process to request an article at a town meeting. And then the third one, the one that's on the back of the sheet, is the recommended wording for the town meeting motion and vote. So both two and three are required to approve the appropriation that the school committee votes through the use of E and D under the regional agreement. There is a typo, by the way, in the second one. If it wasn't corrected, there should be obviously an extra zero in that, in that number. Both two and three have been forwarded to each town for submission to their own council, which is suggested by MSBA as standard practice for town meeting warrant articles. I got an email, as I believe others did as well, that Boxboro's town council has reviewed the language, and they are, and they are okay with it.
So as of a couple hours ago, I heard back from Acton as well. So this has all been distributed to both towns, both of whom sent it to their town council. We've heard back from town council. The language has been verified by town council for both towns, so it's good to go. As far as we know, by MSBA, it's their recommended language, and then by the town councils from both Acton and Boxboro.
So we do need to vote on this, that we approve the language?
Actually, let me interrupt, because I got confused. Too many meetings. So we actually, as a school committee, haven't voted the amount yet. So I think first, we need to vote the amount. We voted that in the School Building Committee, and I forgot we hadn't voted that here. So first, we want to vote that we're requesting the amount of $1.3 million, and then we would vote the article.
That's a good point. Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? That passes unanimously?
Yeah, that was beautiful.
That's good. Okay, so now-
That was just for the amount, Beth. Did you get that?
I did not.
Okay. So he-
So he did not write the motion in the 10th amendment exactly.
Not exactly the way you have it, but he moved to approve the amount of $1.3 million for the purpose of paying the costs of a feasibility study.
Are you reading that?
Yeah, well, it's the, also, it's the language off of here. He took some of the language from the article and schematic design relating to C.T. Douglas, and he stopped there. Yeah. Statement of, through that sentence, yeah. Good? Okay. Paul moved it, and who seconded that?
Deanne.
Deanne, okay. It was a move to approve that we're requesting that amount.
Can I just add a little bit to that, if you don't mind for a minute? So this is in relation to the presentation you had in August, which was the whole update on the building project. There was really a comparative study around the dollar amount for the schematic design feasibility study. We're very comfortable with the $1.3 million, and the reimbursement rate for this phase is 45.3%. So just to remind the committee that 590 of it would be reimbursed by MSBA, 710 is what would come out of E and D. I just wanted to remind everyone of that. And so, yes, we wanted you to officially vote that you support that dollar amount being what we're going to use for the feasibility study. being what we're going to use for the feasibility study and schematic design. And then separately from that, now, go ahead and vote the language to appropriate the actual money and the language for the warrant article.
So there's, there's a nuance to what you just did, or was a vote taken?
Yes.
No.
No, we voted the money, but not the motion.
Yeah.
We didn't vote with this language.
No, exactly. So as a committee, you voted to...
Tough days for Beth. Is that correct? That first vote was taken.
The first vote was taken. The first vote was taken to, for the money of $1.3.
She's trying to catch up. It's in here.
Yes. Oh, sorry, yes, $1.3 million, we voted that. And it was unanimous. Yes, that's correct. Yep.
But you now need to also vote to approve the mo, the form of vote language, as well as the motion language.
Right? Yes.
Dennis?
So, before we do that, I just have a question on the lan, on the wording. So in the second and the third paragraphs, MSBA is actually spelled out. Should that be spelled out in the first one? It's written out, and then MSBA in parentheses to be referred to in the rest of the paragraph. So should MSBA be written out in the first one?
Makes sense to me, yes.
So the first one is a vote we're going to take, and then that won't show up anywhere.
Okay, so that's not going to be...
So when somebody moves it, you could say the full name?
All right, no, that's fine. If it's just the second and third, I just want to make sure, because we're, so we're just consistent.
Right. It's the second one that'll go in the warrant, it's mailed to everyone's home, and the third one is what'll get moved on town meeting floor.
Motion on floor, okay.
Before you make the motion, can I just make sure we're clear on this? That first paragraph, you're going to, when you move it, you're going to read the whole thing, and that's going to appropriate the money. In addition to that, you're going to authorize the wording of the warrant article and the motion for town meetings. Do we want that in one motion or two separate votes?
I, I think it's cleaner for two separate...
Okay.
Actions.
So the, the first motion you're going to make right now is to appropriate the $1.3 million out of E and D by reading that whole paragraph? And if you want to spell out Mass. School Building Authority, that's great.
We have to approve it at $1.3, but it does say then that there's any reimbursement, you know, net of any...
I believe, having been through this, that this vote needs to be transmitted to MSBA, so they will be looking for the text and certified presumably by, by Beth, that the school committee took this action. So that's why it's important that it be entered exactly as it's written here, because that's what we presented to them. Not counsel, this is, the first one is the vote by this school committee.
Before I do that, am I adding the wording or not adding the wording?
Dave, they're debating whether, it only says, in the first paragraph, it says MSBA. It doesn't say Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA. And we're wondering, the first time we use the acronym MSBA, should he say the full language?
I guess I'd say it's immaterial, because I did not change that, and I would have done that, because that is appropriate verbiage.
Right.
But that was as it appeared here, so...
We got it from them.
We got it from them, and they, they know the MSBA, but I guess if, if you, if you change it, I don't think they'll view it as material either.
Yeah.
So I, I think it'd be whatever you're comfortable with.
All right, can I make a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. I move that the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee, the district, hereby appropriates the amount of $1,300,000 for the purpose of paying the costs of a feasibility study and schematic design to the CT Douglas Elementary School Statement of Interest, including all costs incidentals, incidental, or related thereto, referred to the study, set amount to be expended at the direction of the district's school building committee. To meet this appropriation, the district is authorized to utilize certified excess and deficiency funds pursuant to Massachusetts general laws and the agreement for a regional school district for the towns of Acton and Boxborough, Massachusetts, revised July 1st, 2014. The district acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any costs the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district, provided further that the amount of the use of the excess and deficiency funds pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and MSBA.
Bridgette. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? That was unanimous. We all need to, the second piece is, you want to...
I move to see if the town, well, okay, so I move that the form of the article for town meetings of member towns be, to see if the town will approve the appropriation of $1,300,000 from certified excess and deficiency funds of the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District for the purpose of paying the costs of a feasibility study and schematic design relating to the CT Douglas Elementary School Statement of Interest, including all costs incidental or related thereto the study, and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, set amount to be expended at the direction of the district's school building committee. The MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any study costs the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities. Any grant that the district may receive from the MSBA for the study shall be as set forth the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and MSBA.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? That was unanimous. And did you get that, Bridgette, seconded it? Okay.
Okay, can I also, so thank you for all that. Mention that in your packets is the updated flyer with all of the outreach dates on it for the community forums, so please be aware of that. Share that information with your friends, your family, your neighbors. And then just for your information, the packet has the draft building committee meeting, minutes from September 13th. We're providing them in draft because we only meet once a month. This way, you're up to date as much as possible. We'll give you final once they're approved. And a reminder to everyone that there will be special town meetings in Acton and Boxborough on Monday, December 4th, beginning at 7:00 PM.
Okay, so if there's nothing else, I'm going to move on to subcommittee reports. 11.1, the Budget and Policy Subcommittee, the first meeting, is going to be on October the 11th, and I do believe that budget starts at 7:30 and policy starts at 9:00. ALG, so ALG met last Thursday, and we, the FinCom presented their point of view, and when they presented their point of view, they asked us, meaning the committee, the school committee and the Board of Selectmen, to provide feedback on our thoughts around the point of view. So if you all could just take a look at it, if you have any comments or questions, if you could send those to me, I'll make sure and get those over to the FinCom. Also, we shared the building project, where we were with the building project, and some of us are going to be going to the FinCom meeting next Tuesday night to present formally to FinCom where we are on the building project. And I think, anything else, Paul? No? Okay, all right. Dennis?
I have a question about ALG, so, and actually from Marie. I caught you. No. So Jason brought up a question regarding, was it 4.4 million, thank you, $4.4 million regarding to address, God bless, health and welfare?
Bless you.
Health and welfare, health and safety issues. Can you kind of expand a little on that, because that was the, and I know this has probably come through the, the whole building committee, but we didn't seem to have a good answer, so I'm just kind of wondering where that stood.
So Phase 1 of the capital plan, which was done in January 2016, looked at all eight schools, had $120 million worth of things that needed to be done across all eight schools. Within that, they categorized it, and there was a number that said 4.4 of health and safety. And, but a lot of that is paving, it's a lot of different things. Since then, we did all of Phase 2, we did the, finished the master plan, and we narrowed down a lot of what was in that first plan, and a lot of that stuff, we would have called nice to have, but it was on the list. I don't mean under health and safety necessarily. So now we, we have a list of, so first of all, we know what the building project is, we've identified that, so we're not looking at Gates and Douglas and so on and so forth, but, so we've identified $14 million worth of what we're calling scope projects that we're going to do over the next, say, five to eight years. So we don't have health and safety broken out separately that way, and it's the spreadsheet of 400 line items and so on. So Jason was looking for sort of, he was looking almost too far back at this thing from a year and a half ago that we're, we don't, we're not still working with, so, yeah, JD's not here anymore, but, so he had a slide in there. I think some of our feedback is going to be not to put it in that way. I mean, certainly, capital is a priority for us, and we have identified significant capital projects that need to be done. We've built up our budget, small, medium, large, and so on, but to sort of pull that out and single that number out from January 2016, that's not where we are anymore. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, it's just, it made it into the FinCom's point of view.
I know.
As, so...
And we tried to tell him this in email several times, that it's just, he's looking at an old report, and...
Do you have anything to report for FinCom?
Yeah, I do. So they met on the 26th. Couple of big things that came up, and as, as you know, because you're in ALG, there was a $250,000 line item. Now that's going to be for, I think that was their debt assessment for Minuteman, so in the past, Minuteman has not touched the school committee budget, such the town's budget from an assessment perspective. So they're unclear on what they're going to do with that amount right now, but they're either going to take it in, this will be the separate line item in the ALG spreadsheet, but they could look at, you know, debt services, or it could just be a line item in the operating budget, so that decision hasn't been made for this year, but that's something they'll be looking for. They talked about collective bargaining. They have five unions in total, four of them. Their contracts are up on June 30th, so they're probably on the precipice of, of entering into a few negotiations. Point of view, so every year they come out their point of view. In the past, I know, in past years, we've asked somebody from FinCom to present the point of view, so I don't think that's a bad idea. I actually would think that would go over well with them. The point of view document is used from an ALG perspective as, you know, not gospel, but as a good guideline to try to navigate as selectmen and school committee kind of get together and, and start their annual dance. So I would suggest that we either invite Steve, the chair, or even Jason, who is the representative, to potentially present the point of view at the next school committee meeting. They do want feedback from us, they would appreciate feedback from us, and, you know, we could do it through the ALG process, or we could do it, you know, give it to them and have you guys carry it forward, but it's completely up to you.
And, and we had a tri-board, we actually had a tri-board meeting last year, didn't we, with Boxborough?
Yes.
Or was it just all Acton? It was BOS, FinCom, and us? And that's when the point of view was presented? Am I remembering that correctly?
Yes.
Are there any more comments about that? I mean, we are talking about just the Acton-FinCom's point of view versus, you know, when we are regional, so I didn't know how Boxborough felt about having them come and present. I'm looking at you, Mary, but you don't have to answer, I'm sorry.
Having them, have them come here and we present to them, or they present to us?
No.
They do a point of view document the way Acton does?
No, I'm asking you how, I guess I wanted a little bit of feedback from your perspective, or someone from Boxborough, about having the Acton-FinCom come to our meeting and present their point of view to the whole district.
I mean, I think it's fine, you know, when I looked at this, I think it is very well-informed by the work that the school district is doing, and I think that's because of the close collaboration between the Acton-FinCom and the school committee. And so, you know, I, I appreciate a lot of their points, and I support a great deal of their points. I'd love for it to be within the 3%, I can't commit to that right now, we haven't started our budget, but all the other points, I really support. I think that it's fine if they come and talk to us. We can offer for Boxborough to come as well. They're, I think they're still a little understaffed on the FinCom, and so, but we can offer that, yeah.
So I actually think it's a really good idea, so, I'm sorry. Katie?
I heard from a certain Boxborough-FinCom member last night that they were discussing having a joint Boxborough-Acton-FinCom meeting to discuss the region, so I just want to make sure we sort of keep our ears out for that and make sure we're in on whatever conversation they're having.
Okay, great. And I, would you like to reach out to Steve, or would you like me to do that? Okay, great, then we'll just, let me know how it goes. Yeah, Paul?
I just, I'm curious about, and this is, I was able, I was able to look at the multi-year financial model, I got a preview at ALG, and there's just one number that I, I just need to clarify. The excess and deficiency that we have in table, in the Table 6 data for FY '18 showed up as $450,000, and I remember bumping that up last year from, from the 200. But then when we go down to, where is it? Yeah, Section D, in the next page, when we talk about reserves, we have the E and D available balance, Acton portion only, oh, I'm sorry, shoot, where is that number? Yeah, here it is. In Section B, I'm sorry, Acton portion, portion of certified E and D usage was only 170. Wouldn't that go up proportionally with, oh, oh?
Paul, you're really good. You're better than you think. So the town updated this and brought it to ALG, and we didn't have a chance to look at it, and you're correct, it needs to be 450, or 85% of 450, so we gave them that comment at ALG, they're going to make the change, so, good job.
I'm sure your mother thinks you're wonderful, too. I'm sure your mother thinks you're wonderful, too.
It's too late for my wife.
Okay, so, oh, we have, are there any more committee reports? Or anything people want to report out on? That's all I have listed. BLF, anything? Okay, okay. All right, so we have a couple of donations. I'm going to let you talk about that.
Thank you, Amy. In your package is information on two donations. The first is from the McCarthy Town PTSO on behalf of the 6th grade class of 2017. So we're asking for you to accept a donation of $811, a gift of a 11 that will fund the purchase of the installation of a water bottle filler station.
Move to approve with gratitude, especially because it aligns with our policy from last year, and so it's incredibly thoughtful.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That was unanimous?
Thank you. And the second is that the regional PTSO has awarded the district with a $500 grant to support the William James Interface, which is a referral service for parents, students, educators, and community. And we're asking for you to accept that gift.
Move to approve with gratitude.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so we have some FYIs. Do you want me to go through these? I will, I will add one thing, you can... Okay, okay. I will, I will say that our, before we go back to FYIs and I give it to Bill, our next meeting is October 19th, but on October the 24th is our homework night. And that will be in the junior high, the homework night public forum at 7:00 PM in the junior high library.
Thank you. Just want to bring to your attention one of the FYI pieces, 15.1.1. In your package is a copy of an email that came from the Acton Board of Selectmen. They're going through the process of developing or revising their sustainability policy. They've sent various committees a draft of it. They're looking for comments, not from individuals, but from committees, if committees want to do so. They're looking for these comments by October 20th. So if you review, if you want to take the opportunity to do so, to review their policy, again, I would ask if you, if you can send comments to Beth within the next week or so. We can put those together, and that will determine if, and we'll put that as an agenda item on the next meeting. So you can talk about that and determine whether you want to send along comments on, to the Acton Board of Selectmen on their draft policy. Thank you.
Okay, so that's all I have for tonight. Just looking for a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That was unanimous.
Thank you very much.